According to the National Geographic, ocean plastic is estimated to kill millions of marine animals and seabirds every year. And scientists predict that by 2050, plastic will outweigh the number of fish in the entire ocean. Plastics often break down into smaller and smaller particles called microplastics, which can be ingested by both animals and people and remain in our environment for hundreds of years or longer. Here are a few helpful tips on how you can help stop the tide on plastic pollution. Tip one: Bring reusable bags when grocery shopping. Tip two: Avoid using plastic straws or use reusable straws when having a drink. Tip three: Drink from a reusable water bottle instead of buying individual bottles. Tip four: Tell your friends and family about the effects of single-use plastics. You can help reduce the amount of single-use plastics by spreading the word and going green. For more information and to take the pledge, visit reducereuseTampaBay.org.
Good evening and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Comprehensive Plan Amendment Public Hearing. The Board of County Commissioners will consider the adoption of text and map amendments to the comprehensive plan. The Board will also consider the adoption of a small-scale future land use map amendments with related rezonings. I have two notices to read into the record this evening. The first is from Chair Hagan. Please be advised that he will be attending the CPA public hearing meeting virtually. And the second is from Commissioner Myers. Due to another commitment, Commissioner Myers will be running late to this evening's public hearing. Continuance requests, first item, A1 and A2 continuance requests. The applicant has requested a continuance of CPA 2309 and MM 241110 to the August 14, 2025 Comprehensive Plan Amendment Public Hearing at 6:00 PM. I need a motion and a vote to continue.
So moved. Second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, a second by Commissioner Wustel, to A1 CPA 2309 and A2 MM 241110 to the August 14, 2025 Comprehensive Plan Amendment Public Hearing at 6:00 PM. Please record your votes.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Second item is B1 and B2 continuance requests. The applicant's representative, Ms. Corbett, be advised that she has a conflicting hearing at City Council this evening, has requested a continuance of CPA 2433 and CPA 2434 to the end of this evening's public hearing. Need a motion for B1 CPA 2433 and B2 CPA...
So moved. Second, this is just to hear it at the end of the night?
That's correct, sir.
Very good.
I have a motion by Commissioner Wustel and a second by Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote.
Yeah.
I will now, oh, sorry.
Motion carries six to one, or six to zero.
Thank you. I will now request the Planning Commission staff introduce the first item for this evening's agenda.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Gillian Massey with Planning Commission Staff. The first item will be item A3, which is HC CPA 25-02, and that will be presented by Ms. Willow Micky.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Willow Micky with Planning Commission Staff. I'm here to present HC CPA 25-02 located at 115 South 78th Street and 7749 East Adamo Drive. This is a privately initiated map amendment that is small in scale and approximately 4.18 acres. The applicant is requesting to change the future land use category from residential 12 to light industrial planned. This is the general location map. The site is in the urban service area within the limits of the Greater Palm River Community Plan and is within the coastal high hazard area. Here is an aerial of the site. The site is located north of Selman Expressway, south of East Adamo Drive, and west of South 78th Street. Currently on the site, there is heavy industrial and light industrial uses. And within the vicinity of the site, there are heavy commercial and light commercial uses to the north, the Selman Expressway ramp to the east, the Selman Expressway and light industrial uses to the south, and the Tampa bypass canal to the west. This is a site photo looking towards the subject site, and we are facing southwest. This photo is looking at the subject site from South 78th Street, and we are facing This photo is looking across from the subject site on South 78th Street, facing northeast. This is looking onto the subject site. We are facing north. And this is looking towards the Selman Expressway from the subject site, facing south. Currently, the future land use of the site is residential 12. Residential 12 allows for the consideration of 12 dwelling units per gross acre or a maximum floor area ratio of .050. This category allows for the consideration of agricultural, residential, neighborhood commercial, office uses, multipurpose projects, and mixed-use development. Surrounding land use categories include light industrial plan to the north and east, residential 12 and residential 9 to the south of the Selman Expressway. And on the west side of the Tampa bypass canal, there is heavy industrial that is in the city of Tampa. The applicant is requesting to change the site to light industrial planned, which allows for the consideration of uses such as agricultural, light industrial uses such as processing, manufacturing, recycling, and storage of materials as the predominant uses, including support offices, warehousing, and retail uses. No residential is allowed under this category. This slide outlines the potential impacts of the requested land use change. Currently, under residential 12, the site can be considered for up to 50 dwelling units or approximately 91,040 square feet of non-residential. The change to light industrial planned would not allow for the consideration of residential uses, but would allow for up to approximately 136,560 square feet of non-residential uses. The proposed amendment will result in the potential increase in commercial intensity and the introduction of industrial uses and would eliminate the potential for residential The proposal has been reviewed by the commenting agencies, which you can find in your packet under the Agency Review section. There were no objections, however. The Offices of Emergency Management determined the amendment does not align with the objectives outlined in the local mitigation strategy. The Planning Commission reviewed the application and found it to be consistent with the following objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan. The subject property is in the urban service area where 80% of more of new growth is to be proactively directed per Objective 1.1 of the Future Land Use Section. The proposed amendment to the LIP Future Land Use category would allow for an increase in commercial intensity and the introduction of industrial uses. The proposed increase is consistent with the Objective 2.1, 2.2, and the associated policies as they relate to the Future Land Use Map and the range of allowable uses for each Future Land Use category. The proposal is also consistent with Policies 3.1.1, 3.1.2, and 3.1.3 as they relate to compatibility. According to Policy 3.1.3, compatibility is defined as the characteristics of different uses, activities, or designs which allow them to be located near or adjacent to each other in harmony. The current zoning on the subject site aligned with the surrounding designation supports the proposed Future Land Use Change LIP as it aligns with the character of the area. The proposal also meets the intent of Policy 4.3.7 in relation to the coastal high hazard area. Flu's Objective 4.4 and 4.4.1 require new development to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. In this case, the surrounding land use pattern is composed mostly of light industrial and heavy commercial uses and is bordered by the Selman Expressway, the Selman Expressway ramp, and the Tampa bypass canal. The proposed request will complement the area as well as the surrounding uses. The proposal is consistent with the Greater Palm River Community Plan specifically in relation to Goal 5, Strategy 3 and 8, and Goal 5B, Strategy 2. In the Planning and Growth Economic Development section of the plan, 5A, Strategy 3 encourages new infill and redevelopment compatible with existing community patterns that maintains and enhances the community's unique character and sense of place. Goal 5A, Strategy 8, supports well-designed compatible densities and intensities at appropriate locations. And Goal 5B encourages providing opportunities for business growth and jobs in the Palm River area. The Planning Commission recommends that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Will the applicant please come forward?
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, Elise Batzel, Sterns Weaver Miller. It's very odd to be split, so I'm going to be doing this all night like a tennis match. Yes. Madam Chair, before we start, may I present to the record a copy of the presentation? We're here tonight to represent the applicant in a comp plan amendment, a small-scale comp plan amendment. Willow already oriented you to the project, so I'll skip past a couple of these slides and go directly to kind of the add-on to what she said. Currently, there are industrial uses on the property. These have been on the property and remain on the property for a number of years, and our client bought the property and realized that, hey, the future land use for a portion of this property and zoning don't accurately reflect what's been in existence. You pulled up the PD, not the comp plan. Sorry. The beginning is the same. Sorry. Yeah, I should say comp plan. Don't worry. That's it. Thank you. Okay, so here's what's really interesting. If you look at this graphic, you can see that there are industrial uses all around the site. To the south, there is an R12 Future Land Use category. But what's interesting about this piece of property is that it is not developed with residential uses. And in fact, they used a flex from the adjacent Comprehensive Plan category in order to build more intensity on the property to the south than is permitted today. So that just makes this request even more compatible. You know, if you look at the Future Land Use map, you'll see that the property to the south, although it's R12, really isn't functioning as R12. Consistent with multiple, multiple provisions of the Comprehensive Plan, Planning Commission staff, and as well as the Planning Commission voted unanimously for approval. So with that, we'll just answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak on HC CPA 2502? If so, please come forward. Seenan? Oh, yes. Excuse me. I think we move on to the next item, yes? Excuse me. Yes. Okay, so we'll move on to the vote and adoption of 2502 will occur after oral arguments and will be held on RZ 250321.
Commissioners, the next item is related item A4, rezoning application, PD 25-0321. This is a request to rezone a 4.1-acre parcel currently zoned commercial intensive and commercial...
Excuse me, Brian?
What?
We do need to have a swearing hand at this point.
That's on me. Yes, go ahead. We're going to ask the Clerk's Office to administer the oath of oz, please.
Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Again, this is again item A4, related rezoning application, 25-0321. It's a request to rezone a 4.1-acre parcel from Zone CI to CN, which is located on the west side of 78th Street, south of State Road 60, and north of the Selman Crosstown Expressway. The request is to rezone to a planned development, allow for 52,000 square feet of limited manufacturing uses, including open storage. Based around the surrounding development pattern, staff did find this approvable with the proposed conditions. Was found consistent by the Planning Commission, and the Hearing Officer recommended approval. And staff's available for any questions. Thank you.
Yes. Will the applicant please first?
It's the other one, yeah. They just look the same.
That was it?
Nope. That's it, yeah. Go back to the beginning. Thank you. Good evening. For the record, Elise Batzel, Sterns Weaver Miller, 401 East Jackson Street. This is the companion rezoning to the item, agenda item that we just heard. This is 4.1 acres. Generally, it's located north of the Selman Expressway, west of 78th Street, and east of the bypass canal. It is in the Palm River area and within this urban service area. As you can see here, the Future Land Use map, which we spoke about in the last agenda item, currently the future land use is RES 12. But for the record, we, if it is approved, the current land, the future land use designation will be LIP. So the site currently has a split zoning. It's commercial intensive, CI, to the southern portion of the parcel. And you can see that darker red box, the CN zoning designation, is to the north of the parcel. That the property actually, very interestingly, is completely surrounded by right-of-way, either the canal or roads on all sides, so it's naturally physically buffered. Again, just an aerial of the project to orient you. The current use of the property is for equipment sales, equipment services, and open service, sorry, open storage. So there's really two reasons. We're rezoning the property to permit manufacturing uses, but we have gone in and worked with staff. You know, manufacturing uses can be a great number of things. And what we did is we took the existing uses on the property and created a trip cap so that no matter what the uses exchange, if we do increase the trips above what is today, we have to come back and ask for that approval. We're also modifying the access to better conform with the current transportation design standards, so I'll walk you through that as well. Staff, this is consistent with a number of Comprehensive Plan policies and compatible with the surrounding built environment. So if you look at this exhibit, you'll see the access to the north is being eliminated. We are retaining two access points along 78th Street, but eliminating both the north on Adamo Drive and also the northernmost access point on 78th Street. We are asking for one waiver. We are asking for a waiver of portions of the buffering and screening requirements of the Land Development Code under 6.06.06. What's interesting is that the Palm River is actually classified as a group V use, and so you have to have certain buffers between different uses. Here, though, there is existing a 30-foot buffer with type C screening, which is along the western boundary, and a 15-foot type B buffer along the western boundary of the southern parcel. So we're asking for a waiver of both of those. I've turned you now not north to south, but you're looking onto the property as if the river is going in the middle. I wanted you to see from a waiver compatibility standpoint, all of the property on our side of the river are industrial uses, and everything directly across in that whole area are residential and recreational uses within the city of Tampa. There's also another thing that adds justification to this specific waiver. There is approximately 80 feet of natural buffer with dense vegetation between the property and the bank of the Palm River. That's actually swift mud property. So this existing natural buffer, you can see to the south. This is what the property across the river is actually looking at when they're looking across to our industrial property. All they see is trees. So our request tonight is for your approval. The rezoning permits the existing use on the property. It's consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, has been supported by all of staff as well as the zoning hearing master. So with that, our entire development team is here, and we'll answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Do we have any proponent testimony? Do we have any opponent testimony?
Excuse me, Madam Chair. I forgot to ask to submit my presentation into the record. May I do that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Move approval?
We have to go to...
Oh, we have to, we still have staff.
Thank you, though. Planning Commission staff?
Willow Micky, Planning Commission staff. The subject site is located north of the Selman Expressway, south of East Adamo Drive, and west of South 78th Street. The site is in the urban service area within the limits of the Greater Palm River Community Plan and is within the coastal high hazard area. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from commercial neighborhood and commercial intensive to planned development to allow permitted uses in the manufacturing zoning category. The subject site is in the residential 12 Future Land Use category. This request is for a planned development. Is considered concurrent dependent on the approval of HC CPA 25-02 to change the Future Land Use to LIP. The proposal meets the intent of Policy 3.1.1 as well as Objective 4.4 and the associated policies relating to compatibility, as the proposed use is similar to that of the surrounding area. With the existing light and heavy industrial uses surrounding the subject site and the concurrent plan amendment, HC CPA 25-02 to change the Future Land Use category to LIP, the proposed PD aligns with the goals noted in the Greater Palm River Community Plan of the livable community's element of the Comprehensive Plan. Based upon the above considerations and the following goals, objectives, and policies, Planning Commission staff finds the proposed planned development consistent with the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, subject to the conditions set by the Development Services Department.
Thank you. Zoning Hearing Master?
The zoning Hearing Master reviewed the applicant's request for a rezoning from CN and CI zoning districts to the planned development zoning district to permit open storage and 52,000 square feet of industrial land uses as identified in the proposed zoning conditions. A companion Conference of Plan Future Land Use Category Amendment is processing with the rezoning to change the Future Land Use category from residential 12 to LIP. The zoning Hearing Master noted that the site is bordered by East Adamo Drive to the north, South 78th Street to the east, the Selman Expressway to the south, and swift mud-owned Tampa Bay bypass canal property to the west. The site has requested, the project has requested, a planned development variation to eliminate the required buffering and screening on the western boundary. The request was found to meet the Land Development Code, Section 5.03.06, requirements as the swift mud-owned Tampa Bay bypass canal is located to the west, which meets the intent of the LDC buffering and screening standards. The zoning Hearing Master noted that no testimony and opposition was provided at the ZHM hearing. The zoning Hearing Master concluded that the rezoning request to PD to permit open storage and 52,000 square feet of identified industrial land uses is compatible with the surrounding area and consistent with the LDC and the Conference of Plan, and the zoning Hearing Master recommended approval.
Thank you for that. I first need a motion and a vote on ordinance for adoption of CPA 2502.
So moved. I moved it earlier because I think this is a sensible proposal, and I also think it's better to have people working in the coastal high hazard area than living in it. So with that, I move approval.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Cohen and a second by Commissioner Sepeda. Please record your vote.
Yeah.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. I need a motion and a vote for approval of RZ 25-0321.
Move approval?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, a second by Commissioner Wustel. Please record your vote.
Yeah.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Again, for the record, this is Gillian Massey with Planning Commission staff. Next up on the agenda, we have the B items, which is the small-scale plan amendments, adoption, public hearings. Item B3 is HC CPA 25-05 and will be presented by Ms. Willow Micky.
Planning Commission staff? I'm here to present HC CPA 2505 located at 6920 East Chelsea Street. This is a privately initiated map amendment that is small in scale and approximately 3.74 acres. The applicant is requesting to change the Future Land Use category from residential 6 to light industrial planned. This is the general location map. The site is in the urban service area and is within the limits of the East Lake Orient Park Community Plan. This is an aerial photo of the site outlined here in pink. It is located north of East Chelsea Street and is southeast of Interstate 4. With the vicinity, within the vicinity of the site, there are light commercial uses to the west and single-family uses to the east. I-4 is to the north, and across East Chelsea Street to the south, there is public, quasi-public, and heavy commercial uses. This is a site photo looking towards I-4 from East Chelsea Street, facing west, and the site is located on the right. This is looking at the subject site from East Chelsea Street, facing northwest. This is a view of adjacent single-family residential homes to the east of the site, facing north, and the site is to the left. This is looking at the subject site from East Chelsea Street, facing north. And this is a view of Florida Chemical Supply, which is to the west of the site, and we are facing north, and the site is located on the right. The site is in the residential 6 Future Land Use category. It allows for the consideration of agricultural, residential, neighborhood, commercial, office uses, multipurpose projects, and mixed-use development. Surrounding land use categories include residential 6 to the east, west, and north across I-4. There is Research Corporate Park Light Industrial Planned... There is research corporate park, light industrial planned, and office commercial 20 uses to the south. The request is to change the site to light industrial planned, which allows for the consideration of uses such as agricultural, light industrial uses such as processing, manufacturing, recycling, and storage of materials, as the predominant uses including support offices, warehousing, and retail uses. No residential is allowed under this category. This slide outlines the potential impacts of the requested land use change. Currently, under residential six, the site can be considered for up to 22 dwelling units or approximately 40,728 square feet of non-residential uses. The change to light industrial planned would not allow for the consideration of residential uses, but would allow for up to approximately 122,185 square feet of non-residential uses. The proposed amendment will result in the potential increase in commercial intensity and the introduction of industrial uses. It would eliminate the potential for residential development. This proposal has been reviewed by Commenting Agency, which you can find in the packet under the Agency Review section. There were no objections. However, the Fire Department have concerns regarding the property to the southwest of the site, Florida Chemical Supply, as they have responded to hazmat calls for chemical releases in the past. The Community Infrastructure Planning Department have concerns due to the transportation analysis not being sufficient according to Hillsborough County standards. The Planning Commission reviewed the application and found it to be consistent with future land use section Goal 7 and Objective 7.1 in the Economic Development section of the plan. Goal 7 seeks land use and development patterns which will promote employment and economic growth, and Objective 7.1 focuses on pursuing a thriving economy through the promotion of target industries as defined in the Florida statutes, which are focused on national and international competitiveness. Additionally, the county will promote businesses that provide diverse employment opportunities that promote an appropriate jobs and housing balance, where people can live near their workplace and that there are enough jobs in the area to support the local population. The Planning Commission recommends that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. That concludes my presentation. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you very much. Will the applicant please come forward?
Good evening. Elizabeth Keller Kelly from the Law Firm of Boulder Lundt Koch Martino, 1,000 West Cash Street, Tampa, Florida, here on behalf of the applicant and owner, Protec 34th Holdings LLC. First, I want to thank staff for their time and attention for this application. And really, my brief presentation will be focusing on compatibility and why this project is compatible, consistent, and a sensible improvement for the neighborhood. Again, our specific request is to go from residential six to light industrial planned, and in a moment, I'll touch upon why that planned portion is so important in the consistency and compatibility with the neighborhood. But first, I would like to briefly highlight again the Planning Commission hearing that occurred on April 14th. On page 13 of the staff report, you can see that we received a unanimous approval to find this request consistent with the comprehensive plan. We've already been oriented, so I'll skip through a few of my slides. But I do want to point out here, because it will go forward towards the consistency later. So here, the yellow portion represents R6, and the pink portion beneath represents land owned by FDOT and a Penske truck operating facility. And so what portion I want to focus on, though, is that triangle right next to our subject site. As we'll point out, although it's R6 currently, it is not used for any residential use. So zooming in, you can see our subject site outlined in red. In that triangle portion to the west there, that is a chemical supply company. So although it is R6, it is not used for any residential use, and it is highly unlikely to ever be used for residential use. And so light industrial planned essentially requires a site plan. There are many things you understand that a site plan can restrict, such as condition and can restrict conditioning control for. And so essentially, you will see the comprehensive plan stated intent for LIP. Applicant commits through this specific request that any subsequent uses, development, or increased intensity will be subject to a publicly noticed site plan controlled zoning amendment. And that's essentially because consistency matters, and applicant recognized this and purposely chose LIP instead of traditional light industrial use. And we again thank staff for their attention and diligence regarding this request and for their time put into the staff report. This is the same report provided to Planning Commission, as we mentioned previously, gave us a unanimous vote recommending that this request is compatible, and we are simply requesting that you find the same here tonight.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on HCCPA 2505, please come forward. Okay, seeing no one in the queue, can I please have a motion to approve HCCPA 2505?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bowles and a second by Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote for HCCPA 2505.
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Next item, please.
Gillian Massey with Planning Commission staff. The next section on the agenda is the transmittal items, Section C, section, or Item C1 is HCCPA 25-08, and will be presented by Ms. Alexis Myers.
Good evening, Commissioners. Alexis Myers, Planning Commission staff. I'm here to present HCCPA 2508 located at 1641 Baumwamama Road for the urban service area expansion. This is a privately initiated map amendment that is large in scale and approximately 470.9 acres. The applicant is requesting to expand the urban service area. This amendment is associated with HCCPA 2507, which is a request to change the future land use category from agricultural 1 to 5 to residential 4. This is the general location map. As I mentioned, this amendment is associated with HCCPA 2507. It is in the rural area and within the limits of the South Shore Area-Wide Systems Community Plan. It is located north of State Road 675, I mean 674, and east of Baumwamama Road. Here is the aerial of the site. The site is outlined in pink, and a blue line indicates the existing urban service area boundary. As I mentioned in the last, sorry, within the past year, the Board of County Commissioners directed Planning Commission staff to study certain areas for the urban service area expansion. The Wamama Village Residential 2 and Residential 2, Residential Plan 2, future land use categories were part of the first, part of the study. There were two other areas part of the study, Little Manatee South and the I-4 corridor. The publicly initiated amendments are HCCPA 2445 and 2447, and 2445 is located right just to the west of Baumwamama Road, in this area right over here. Next are the impacts. This amendment would bring 470.9 acres into the urban service area, requiring at a minimum connection to a public water and sewer. Next are the agency comments. The proposed amendment received no objections from the following agencies. As far as the consistency review, the proposed amendment is consistent with the following objectives and policies of the unincorporated County Comprehensive Plan. Planning Commission recommends that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. And this isn't my presentation for HCCPA 2508. Oh, wait, yes. And I can go on to 07, if that's okay? Okay, yes. So Alexis Myers, Planning Commission staff, I'm here to present HCCPA 2507 located at 1641 Baumwamama Road. This is a privately initiated map amendment that is large in scale and approximately 470.9 acres. The applicant is requesting to change the future land use designation from agricultural 1 to 5 to residential 4. Here is the general location map. As I mentioned in the last presentation, this amendment is associated with HCCPA 2508 to expand the urban service area. It is also in the rural area and within the limits of the South Shore Area-Wide Systems Community Plan. It's located north of State Road 674 and east of Baumwamama Road. Here is the aerial of the site. The site is outlined in pink, and a blue line indicates the urban service area boundary. The site currently has agricultural, single-family uses, and vacant land. The site also has wetlands and is in the FEMA Flood Zone AE. Agriculture is also to the east, west, and north. There are single-family uses to the north, south, east, and further west in the urban service area. Vacant land is to the north, south, and east. Natural preservation is directly west. Lastly, there are public quasi-public institution uses to the south and west. As I mentioned in the last presentation, the Board of County Commissioners directed Planning Commission staff to study certain areas for the urban service area expansion. Now, we have some photos of the site. This is looking east from Baumwamama Road to the single-family uses on the subject site. This is looking west of the subject site from Baumwamama Road. This is on the subject site looking west as well. And this is looking east of the subject site. And we're on the subject site looking north, where there are agricultural uses. And this is looking south towards the subject site from Baumwamama Road. Currently, the future land use designation is agricultural 1 to 5. The agricultural 1 to 5 category allows one dwelling unit per five gross acres and a maximum floor area ratio of 0.25. This designation allows for the consideration of farms, ranches, feedlots, residential, neighborhood, commercial, offices, industrial uses related to agricultural uses, and mining-related activities. Other future land use categories shown in this map include Wamama Village Residential 2 and natural preservation to the west and south, and agricultural 1 to 10 to the east. The applicant is proposing to amend the future land use category to residential 4. The residential 4 category allows four dwelling units per gross acre and a maximum floor area ratio of 0.25. This designation allows for the consideration of agricultural, residential, neighborhood, commercial, office uses, and multipurpose projects. Next are the impacts. As far as existing conditions, currently under AR 1 to 5, the site can consider 94 dwelling units or 5,128,101 square feet of non-residential uses. Under the proposed future land use designation of residential 4, the site could consider 1,883 dwelling units or the same amount of square footage for non-residential uses. During the rezoning process, commercial locational criteria may affect the allowable square footage for potential non-residential development. The proposed amendment will result in the increase in development potential by allowing higher residential and greater commercial intensity. Next are the agency comments. The proposed amendment received no objections. Then for the consistency review, the proposed amendment is consistent with the following objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan. Lastly, Planning Commission recommends that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. This concludes my presentation for HCCPA 2507. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Will the applicant please come forward?
Place in the record. Yes. Thank you. Good evening. Jake Kramer with Sterns Weaver Miller, 401 East Jackson Street. Good evening, Commissioners. Got a brief presentation tonight. I think staff did a good job of laying the groundwork. You may recall, a couple of years ago, you all approved the Wamama, the update to the Wamama Plan, and while there were some concerns with that plan, one of the best things about it was it provided for employment, and it expanded the downtown of Wamama toward the east. That expansion, which allows not just R4 densities, so suburban land use, suburban densities, it also allows employment uses such as industrial, all the way up to the doorstep of this particular property. And you can see that here. The Wamama Downtown East, again, it focuses on large-scale uses, including industrial. Now, that's on one side of our property. On the other side, we have Carlton Branch, which is named for, you know, one of the greatest agricultural families in the county, and we've preserved that. So I'm not representing a developer coming here saying, hey, give us development rights and we'll give you conservation. This is for an agricultural landowner that is saying, I've already done the right thing. I've already preserved the land, and now I'd like some modicum of development rights that will allow that transition to occur. Current use is as a borrow pit. This facility provides a lot of the dirt that we use to build our roads in South County. This, so the applicant is proposing to use this land, there won't be enough land really to use as agriculture after that operation is done, so this is essentially what would come next in a couple of years. Here, you can see that in the industrial on one side, conservation on the other. And that's the reason why there's sort of the irregular shape of the application and the land that we're including in here, is because of the conservation easement, which you can see here. So those lands are preserved forever. That can be enforced by federal government as well as three-state agencies. We don't see this a lot, right? This is not, this land has to be preserved, and not only that, the applicant has responsibilities to maintain that and even make the land better, make it more like old Florida. So with that, our land planner, David Smith, has a few comments.
Good evening, Commissioners. David Smith, 401 East Jackson Street. As Jake was indicating, the presentation went off. Where is it? There we go. So what you can see here is that we've represented where the R4 is coming to Baumwamama Road with the plan amendments that have been approved by the county and moving the urban service boundary. We feel that this provides a better transition, in matter of fact, a similar transition to what is already happening out there. We're going from R4 to AR, and in our case, we're proposing the land that we don't have in lakes. Actually, the lakes are included, but right up to our conservation area would all be R4, and then it would provide a transition, a very good barrier in protecting the agricultural that's on the other side of the creek. This gives you a better example, representation of how far we're talking about. The right-hand side with the lakes shows we've got about 4,000 feet to the other side of the preservation area, protecting that agricultural land that is further to the east. This shows the actual developable area, so it's much smaller than the calculation would be on the total 400-plus acres, and in fact, we're probably looking at, at best, 800 units that could possibly go there, or with a more conservative approach, about 630. We think this also provides for a much more efficient utilization of future infrastructure, so you can double-load the utility lines that are running down Baumwamama Road and coming out from Wamama. And with that, I'll let Jake conclude, and I can answer any questions.
Thanks, David. So in conclusion, as you all know, the lines, the urban service boundary lines were drawn in 1989. RP2 and WVR2, those lines were drawn in 1989. They were basically drawn with a crayon, and back then, they had to pick, they had to pick a line, and it was somewhat arbitrary where that exactly ended. It just happens that it's ended on our doorstep, and the county has approved all of this density and intensity right next door. So the land will not be viable long-term for agriculture, and so we think R4 is the appropriate density, as, you know, the board has given direction when we bring land in. You all have asked us generally to request the R4 category. I did place one letter into the record from another great agricultural family, the Sumners. They are in support and live very nearby this site, and so they have some comments in there that they believe, they agree with us that this site is not long-term viable for agriculture. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak on HCCPA 2508 or HCCPA 2507? Staff, do we have anyone online? Madam Chair, we do have two people online, Scott Campbell and Buddy Harwell. Please proceed. Mr. Campbell, we'll start with you.
Hello?
Go ahead, Ms. Campbell. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Ms. Campbell.
Yeah, my name is Scott McCampbell. Good evening, Commissioners. I live out on Leonardville Road, 922 Leonardville Road in Wymanma, about a half mile from this proposed site. Also live next door to one of the borrow pits that's actually on my road. My property is actually contiguous to it. It's owned by Razorback. So this is my neighborhood. I travel around 674 Baumwamama Road daily. Razorback's been a great neighbor to us out here and they've really supported the families that live out here. As a matter of fact, the owner, John Jackson, introduced himself to me about five years ago when I moved out here. Always been transparent about what his plans were and what he was doing. Been an excellent business owner and just a good supporter to our community out here. As a matter of fact, during Hurricane Milton, just as one example, last year, he offered and actually a couple of neighbors took him up on providing a loader and an operator to help clear some trees and take care of some fence works and that type thing. You know, rarely is it ever, does a private company ever offer anything like that to the residents who might need assistance. Just real impressed with him. I trust him. I think he's a good conservationist. And I understand that the county's vision plan for Wymanma is to extend it downtown all the way to Baumwamama Road over time and that the county even would like to see some commercial industrial uses in that area. I just want to say I'm in support of these applications. I believe the residents in my area and my family will greatly benefit by the improved highways, utilities, infrastructure this proposal is going to bring while continuing preserve, our conservation, our wetlands. I mean, I'm just in full support of it. I think the development's coming. It's headed this way. It's not going to be here tomorrow, but it's coming and we just need to have people who are going to be conservationists and they're going to take care of the land and take an ownership in the properties that they have to make sure that their development is just not overdone and I think Razorback Mine is, has this in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Next virtually, yes, next speaker, Buddy Harwell.
Good evening, Commissioners. Buddy Harwell here at Baum Civic Association. First of all, yeah, we have met with Mr. Jackson ourselves and he showed us around his process and, you know, very nice gentleman and stuff like that. Main thing we want to point out, I mean, this, first of all, was not even in the RP2 designation. So to go from a one to five without even the overlay to four houses per acre is quite a bit of a jump. I mean, that's a 20-fold. Now, if he was willing to go the true RS4 to colder acre lots, that's something we could probably live with. I want to point out, Mr. Kramer misspoke Monday night at the Planning Commission when he said that we, he did, I did show up at the local meeting, which was 10 miles away from the site. We did talk about the different stuff. Mr. Jackson was there too. He did not satisfy any of our concerns, like he said at the Planning Commission Monday night. And to point out, Monday night is our monthly Baum meeting night and also with Tampa Bay Waterhead, a presentation out there too. So that's why most of us wasn't there and we didn't even, wasn't aware of the meeting. The county needs to do something with notification with these meetings. It's hard for the individual to keep going online every day to try to find out when the meetings are, if they get canceled, if they get delayed, whatever. But that's just an issue that I would like to see changed also. And like I say, you know, if we allow this one, yeah, they say there's a lake back there that's a natural buffer, but you know, the gentleman with the property behind him between the lake and Carlton Lake Road is going to say, well, this far, what's another couple hundred feet? What's another, you know, 300 or 400 houses? Where does it stop? I mean, if we already approved another 30,000 houses out that way and it was stopping at Baumwamama like it should because the other side is not RP2. So like I say, we are opposed to this and hope you decide against it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
That is it for C1 and C2.
Thank you very much. Applicant has an opportunity to report.
Thank you, Jake Kramer, again. Just a couple of points. Number one, this is the first time I've heard Mr. Harwell still has some concerns. The good news is, this is a transmittal hearing and so I would just ask you to send this to the state. Let's get their comments. If you all have any concerns, let me know. And in the meantime, it'll take a couple of months to bring this back and I'm happy to sit down with Mr. Harwell and the applicant to just see if we can resolve any concerns. The other thing to remember is, we haven't filed a PD. That's because the precedent has been, we don't normally file PDs for these USA applications because you all need to make that policy decision first. A PD is not going to be right behind this. We're probably talking a year or two. And so we've got time when we work through the PD issues to resolve any of the buffering type concerns. Other thing I just wanted to point out is, the whole reason why we didn't include the conservation in the urban service boundary request is because we knew that there would be a concern that this gets expanded over time. So that's actually, we purposely left the conservation out of the urban service boundary so that, so that others won't be able to say, hey, we're adjacent, let us into, right? That's a, that's a future policy decision to make. And so with that, I would just close with saying, this is a development in the right area. We are the transition, right, between industrial and conservation and I think a moderate level of suburban density right next door to jobs generation is the right place. So, thank you. Happy, our team is here also if you have any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Commissioner Whistle, you're recognized.
Thanks. I mean, we all know my position on the urban service area line anyways and it was just a crayon drawn. I talked to one of the tomato farmers down there. He's in his 90s now, but he was actually involved in the original negotiations of the line and then at the last minute, the Planning Commission back then surprised them and torpedoed the whole deal and changed it without them, and any of them even knowing what was going on. They brought in this consultant from Los Angeles and then he brought in this urban service area line deal. But the other thing that I wanted to point out that wasn't talked about is that this would almost certainly with that conservation land around it and then the RS4 on the other side, be considered one of those agricultural enclaves that the state's pushing for now. And I don't know how it wouldn't be considered that, so it's kind of a moot point for me. So I'm going to be supportive for that reason.
Mr. Bowles?
I was going to bring up that same point, Commissioner Whistle, but also, Mr. Kramer, ask you a question. Is it, is it going to be some time before, are both those borrow pits done? Are we still, are they still active?
Still active. Two of the, two of the three are done and the third one is still.
Is the third one the one that's to the south?
Yes.
The smaller one? So that has, is that going to be growing in size or is that, you know what I mean? Is it going to be bigger or just deeper?
It's going. Yeah.
There we go. That's going to be bigger.
Yes. This is the final size, if you will. If you look on an aerial today, I believe it's not quite this big. I do have one of the employees who operates there if you, we can have him answer that.
Yeah, so my question.
What's your concern?
Yeah, my question is more geared towards, so this is still an active work site. We're not building houses on it tomorrow or in the next, and I understand there's so many other concurrences that have to follow along those lines. We're talking, again, years down the road that that could happen if that was the case, notwithstanding the point that Commissioner Whistle brought up with the enclave. So I was just curious, so we're still working this site like a, it's a work site?
The site, that's right. The site is still, it's still working. This is essentially just positioning it for the future, asking for what the land, something similar to what the landowners right across the street were able to get. It's going to take us, again, my client is not a developer by trade, so it's going to take us some time to figure out all those details.
Right. Okay. Well, thank you very much. Thanks.
Commissioner Cohen?
I think that conservation easement is a very natural boundary and it's certainly a better boundary than having it be different on either side of a major arterial. So with that, I would move approval.
For clarification, that's on 2508.
That was on 2508. Excuse me, that was on 2508, yes.
Excellent. I have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, a second by Commissioner Whistle on HCCPA 2508. Please record your vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. I entertain a motion on 2507.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Whistle, a second by Commissioner Cohen on HCCPA 2507. Please record your vote.
Yeah.
At this time, I.
Motion carries six to zero.
My apologies. At this time, I need a motion for a transmittal, please.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Whistle, a second by Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote for transmittal.
Motion carries six to zero.
Next item, please.
Last on the agenda, we have the B items, which were continued from the beginning of this meeting. Items B1 and B2 I will be presenting as a combined presentation as the items are related. And I believe HTV, if you could advance my slides for me, that'd be great. Gillian Massey, for the record, with Planning Commission staff. I'm presenting on HCCPA 24-33, which is an urban service area expansion request at 1620 South Dover Road. Next, please. This request is a privately initiated text amendment to expand the urban service area to include approximately 31.83 acres that is currently designated residential one. There is an associated proposed map amendment, HCCPA 24-34, to change the designation to residential four, which I will present following this. The location of this plan amendment request is in the eastern portion of unincorporated county. It was originally submitted as a part of the July 2024 cycle and this is why it's considered a text amendment, which it was, it was submitted prior to the recent procedures, manual changes. And then it was continued to the January cycle after initial consideration by the board. It's in the rural area and not within the limits of a community plan. This is an aerial photo of the site outlined in pink. The blue line indicates the existing urban service area boundary. The site is located on the east side of South Dover Road, south of State Road 60 and north of Durant Road. Surrounding uses mainly include single-family residential to the east, west and south and the energy industrial park designated property is located to the north and northeast of the site. If the expansion is approved, the neighborhood directly to the west would remain in the rural area but would be surrounded by the urban service area. Next slide, please. This is a photo of the subject site, which is located on the east side of South Dover Road. Next slide. This is a photo of the adjacent, some of the adjacent residential development. Next slide. As mentioned, the impact of this amendment would bring 31.83 acres that are currently designated as residential one into the urban service area, which would require a connection to public water and sewer at a minimum. Next slide. This, this application was sent out for agency review and there were no objections received. Next slide. The Planning Commission reviewed the request and found it to be consistent with several areas in the comprehensive plan. Goal one and policy 1.1.9 of the future land use section speaks to urban expansion areas, ensuring that growth is supported by existing or planned public facilities and services and that certain criteria must be met for an urban service area expansion. The proposed request meets this policy direction as there are public facilities in the immediate area. Furthermore, the site meets the criteria to expand the urban service area, which include being adjacent or contiguous to the urban service area, containing developable land which could address supporting the need for expansion to support population projections, having a functional relationship to the, to the development pattern of the surrounding area, contribution to necessary infrastructure and services, and allowing for no adverse environmental impacts. The applicant has, has provided supporting documentation on each of these areas and also agency comments on each of these technical areas were received in which there were no Next slide. Planning Commission has recommended that the proposed text amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. And next I'll move on to the presentation for HCCPA 24-34, which is the associated map amendment at 1620 South Dover Road. Next slide. This is a privately initiated small-scale map amendment proposing to change approximately 31.83 acres in the residential one designation to residential four. Next slide. Again, this is the same site as the last presentation. It's in the eastern part of the county in the rural area and not within the limits of a community, community plan. Next slide. Again, the site is outlined here in pink and the existing urban service area boundary is the blue line on the slide. Next slide. The site's located in the residential one future land use category. It allows for consideration of low-density residential, rural-scale neighborhood, commercial, office and multipurpose projects. Neighborhood commercial uses are subject to locational criteria. Surrounding land uses include residential one to the east, residential four to the south and to the west, and energy industrial park to the north and northeast. Next slide, please. The request is to change the site to residential four, which allows for consideration of low-density residential at four dwelling units per gross acre, neighborhood, commercial, office uses and multipurpose projects subject to locational criteria. Next slide. This slide outlines the potential impacts of the requested land use change. Currently under the residential one, the site can be considered for up to 31 dwelling units or approximately 350,000 square feet of non-residential development, which would be subject to locational criteria. The proposed change to residential four increases the potential density to 127 dwelling units and the non-residential intensity remains the same. Therefore, overall, the proposed amendment would allow for an increase in potential density. Next slide. There were no objections received from the commenting agencies. Next slide. Planning Commission reviewed this application and found it to be consistent with several goals, objectives and policies in the comprehensive plan. In this case, the surrounding land use pattern is comprised of agriculture and large lot single-family uses to the east. However, there's also a prominence of low-density suburban-scale residential developments as well. The residential, the residential four future land use category designates areas that are suitable for low-density residential development as well as suburban-scale commercial, office uses and multipurpose projects. Objective 1.2 of the future land use section notes that the rural area is intended to provide areas for long-term agricultural uses, large lot rural residential uses and undeveloped natural areas. However, although in the rural area, the proposed change to the residential four future land use category is consistent with what is directly to the west across South Dover Road and to the south, which is in the urban service area. The adjacent subdivision to remain in the rural area, which is located directly to the northwest, is similar in nature to what would be expected in a suburban-scale land use category, even though it's designated as residential one. Lots in that, in that development range from .5 to .75 acres in size, which does not reflect what's intended for the residential one and it's also supported by potable water, which could indicate that that's considered a suburban enclave. Within the rural area, there are existing developments characterized as suburban enclaves or rural communities. These are residential developments which have a more dense development pattern and character usually one or two dwelling units per gross acre. The intended density and intensity in the residential four category would complement the existing development pattern if approved for the subject site. According to future land use section policy 4.7.4. According to future land use section policy 4.7.4, when planning the location of a new non-residential development, intersections meeting locational criteria, a transition in intensity of non-residential uses shall be established, which is compatible with the surrounding character. Residential four would allow for a gradual transition between some of the more rural uses to the east and the more intense uses allowed in the energy industrial park category to the north. The transition to residential four on the subject site would allow for development that is compatible with the surrounding area and would be consistent with this policy direction. Next slide, please. And with that, the Planning Commission recommends that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Will the applicant please come forward?
Good evening. Kami Corbett with the Law Firm of Hillward and Henderson. I first want to thank you for accommodating my conflict of hearings this evening. We really appreciate that. We have a joint presentation as well. Isabel Albert's going to come up and do that.
Thank you. Good evening. Isabel Albert with Half 1000 North Ashley Drive, here representing the applicant in these text amendment and map amendment. So first, this staff explained exactly what we're requesting, and they did a good job with that. But I just wanted to go through these policies that we have to go through, these criterias that we have to go through, seven of them. The first one is to show that we're adjacent to the urban service area. This slide shows that we are adjacent on three sides. We need to show that we also contain developable land. In this case, you can see that it does. And as well as its extension of existing development pattern. And you can see there, to the east and to the south, there's quite some, quite developable already area in the surrounding. And then we also have to show that there's available capacity in infrastructure. And this is like these seven things that they're looking for here, the school transportation, all of that. So first of all, we need to show that there's surrounding schools in the area, and this graphic does show this. There's also a large transportation network that's in existence. Public utilities are already adjacent to the site and are available to be for the site. Fire stations are also located in the area, as well as park and recreation area. We also have to show that there's no adverse environmental impact, which this request does not, as well as we need to show that these existing data for the expansion of the urban service area. And as we all know, the Planning Commission did do a study and updated their comprehensive plan to reflect the incoming need for more housing. And that it does not compromise the efficient use of land, which it does not. Planning Commission went through the policies, and they found also that there was no reviewing objections from reviewing agencies. And that concludes my presentation. I can go on to the next one if you wish. So this proposal is for residential one to residential four. Again, these are all the policies that Planning Commission staff went through, and I don't need to go through them. But that basically concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just do want to say, I know the maximum potential shows as 127. The reality with development standards, particularly the new stormwater rules that are coming through, the reality is that we're about going to be at about 62 units. They're unlike the last case, we actually do have a PD filed on this one, and that will be coming before you in a couple of months. It's not concurrent with this, but it's adjacent to it, and you'll be able to see it and make that decision at that time. And we're here to answer any questions, should you have any.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak on HCCPA 24-33 or 24-34? Staff, do we have anyone online?
Madam Chair, we do have five people online. If it's, please, the chair, we'll call them one by one.
You can proceed.
We'll get started with Penny Martin.
Penny Martin, Ground Zero- Penny Martin, Ground Zero resident. Please vote no today to convert this small parcel from rural to urban. This request is not consistent with the competent guidelines. The planning staff found this to be consistent based on nine objectives. I'm asking that there be another review of this and leave it zoned as is until. The community group of us outlined 18 inconsistencies after extensive review. We email that into you for your consideration. To set the stage, this area is comprised of large acreage. We farm land, have livestock, barns, horses, and drive tractors. It's a country environment. We disagree with the interpretations and ask you to take a deeper look at this. How can there be such a vast difference in interpretation? Did you review our input? Just to cover a few of the things, goal number one for growth management in the rural areas, we can't support the massive homes crammed in on us as it is. You don't live out here, you have no idea its impact it is making to us. Plus, we have 1,200 homes and 10,000 cars getting ready to come down these two country roads we live on real soon. The developmental section is not consistent. The agricultural retention objectives are not being honored. Goal number three, community contact compatibility, that is not consistent as well. The boundary change will most definitely adversely impact environmental and natural resources. Staff says it wasn't, it won't. Have you ever been out here to see this area? It's comprised of wetlands. We want to approve this based on, also want to approve this based on population and employment projections. We see this is only provide temporary jobs for construction workers. There's not enough room out here. There's so many people that have been crammed in here, and our roads are gridlocked. As you know, this case was denied in 2023, when they asked for 31 homes. Now, the new plan has changed upward to a range of 65 to 127 homes in the middle of the woods on wetland, and it gets approved without one question being asked by staff. How can this happen? There's never an explanation. This request expanded urban lines, does not share the characteristics of our area. There's so many inconsistencies. I'm asking that you take the time and look deeper into this. We are okay to build one house per acre and remain rural. That is consistent with our small country area here in Durant. I ask you that you please review this request in greater detail. It will upset our ecosystem. And the thought of putting in million-dollar homes, our children in this area are just getting out of college and raising families. They can't afford million-dollar homes. And that find jobs that would support such a home? The emergency exit that has been mentioned that they might have to make would come out onto our land. This land is basically land locked in, sitting on a swamp. There's no infrastructure plan. We can't even get around here on the roads. As I mentioned, it's only two small country roads here. I live on wetland also. The mass flooding that we endure already is a result of mass development.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Ma'am, thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next, we have George Nieman.
Good evening. I'm George Nieman. I'm an active member of the Fitzgeralds for Neighborhood Coalition. Our Neighborhood Coalition actively opposes CPA 24-33 and 24-34. The Planning Commission misrepresented some key points in their reviews. We submitted numerous inconsistencies that we found. I asked the Planning Commission Chairman and the Executive Director to address the inconsistency in a written response. We never received anything from the Planning Commission. They don't feel like answering it, I guess. 99 neighbors that surround this property have signed petitions opposing me. The area to the north, the south, and the west are large lots. The Planning Commission misrepresented what surrounds its property, as long as the applicant, as well as the applicant. The applicant admitted that there already are flooding problems. Their solution is to cram 60-plus large homes into only 12 of the 31 acres, creating a truly urban enclave surrounded by large lots. One, two, and two-plus-three-acre lots, by the way. The urban sector already has thousands of acres that could support this size development. And you have the energy park getting ready to develop 1,200 homes only 600 feet away from this one. The EIP and its development, this particular development would both be relying on Dover Road, which would create an insurmountable capacity issue. And please, don't tell me, well, they'll have mobility fees. Of course, the mobility fees don't cover it. This is incompatible. And the community knows it. They don't want it. And you can't just say because a developer says, I'd like to, you know, this is my business plan. I'd like to build at a higher density. There is not really a real reason to expand the urban sector right here. There's plenty of urban land where there's more infrastructure available to support it. So please, as Mrs. Martin said, maybe it needs to be remanded, and it needs to be taken at a closer look at the inconsistencies that we pointed out, and we'd be willing to meet with the Planning Commission, if they were willing to meet with us, as well as counties to look at the inconsistencies and the problems like flooding that are ongoing all the time. They've had floods with Milton-
Thank you very much, Mr. Nieman.
That took-
Next speaker, please.
Eight weeks. Thank you.
The next speaker is Deborah Holliday. Go ahead, Deborah.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. Neighbors close to this property attended a hotel meeting with West Bank at a hotel far away from the actual property. They presented a map showing three retention ponds and 62 homes being built. Once they figured out that there was a concern by residents about new development causing more flooding, they told them it would fix their flooding issues by having the retention pond from their property to capture any water headed their way. But when the county was contacted about this map, they said they had no knowledge of this map. Then we heard it was 131 homes. Which one is it? The proposed amendment also states that surrounding lots are comparable of what they want to do with this neighborhood. Also, not true. The lots behind and adjacent on both sides of this land are much larger. To the right, facing the house on the property, there are lot sizes going south, all the way down to Durant, that range from two acres up. On left is Dover Road, I'm sorry, Dover Woods. They actually sell larger lots as well. East is Martin Road, where farms and large residential lots are. Lot sizes are one acre up, with many being as much as three to five acres. They won't put in an emergency exit. They will run out on Martin Road, which is a rural area. Farms and large lot residential are on this street. This street also has, is also home to Samuel Crane and Wetland. Existing traffic congestion is already a problem on Dover and Durant. This is because there are three schools on Durant. Traffic from the three schools travels south on Dover onto Durant, and the high school for the area is on Turkey Creek. Majority of the traffic will travel east toward Turkey Creek to dump the kids out there. And just because there are schools in the area, that doesn't mean they have the capacity. The Berry property is also adjacent to the EIP property. Approval has been given, as George said, to build 1,200 homes, which will also add as a congestion out here. There is also a project for Turkey Creek Preserve, and that's going to add even more traffic. In the plan amendment text request for this development, it says, in quotes, "The plan seeks to ensure that new growth occurs in a manner that fits in with the existing community and utilizes efficient infrastructure, based upon the incompatibility with the surrounding areas and the lacking infrastructure." This request is not, is not consistent with the comprehensive plan, and I urge you to vote no. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Next, we have Brady Harris.
Yes, this is Brady. And I just wanted to point out some of the inconsistencies as well. The traffic is a major one. The roads can't handle the traffic already on them. More or less badening, you know, like 62 homes up to 127 homes plus. And there's four subdivisions that are going to be impacted by flooding. They sit lower than the land, and the land is already, you know, very wet. It stays wet all the time in the back house. Arch McDonald's going to definitely be flooded out. And there's several other issues, as well as the schools. I mean, the schools are, you know, near capacity already. Where are the children going to go to school at? And like the other speakers have said, there's houses that are one, two-plus acres. And we live in a rural area. And that's typically one-plus-acre lots. And this just doesn't fit. I mean, you know, it's like third and square peg in a round hole. And I don't see how you can find this consistent with the plan and moving the urban service area. That's, you know, I mean, why, what's going to stop it just moving, moving it a little bit this time? It'll get moved a little bit more, and all you're doing is pushing out the agricultural. So I ask you to find this inconsistent, as noted in, and we have written in and have never, have never gotten a response from the Planning Commission on any of the inconsistencies that we've all brought up. And we would be very willing to meet with the Planning Commission and staff and the Board of County Commissioners staff to go over some of the concerns of the community. And we have about 100 petitions that are in opposition to this. And nobody's even taken time to talk to us or even respond to us. So I would ask you to please go through.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our last speaker is Yvette Nieman.
Yeah, hi. Yvette Nieman, Dover. Here tonight, the boys by Strong Opposition seek to expand the urban service area to encompass the property at 1620 South Dover Road. While the applicant may present this as a minor adjustment, the implications are far-reaching. This amendment sets concerning precedent for further importment into our rural and agricultural lands, areas that are vital for our community's character and sustainability. The urban service area is designed to concentrate growth in areas equipped with existing infrastructure, thereby preserving the integrity of our rural zones. Expanding this boundary undermines that purpose, potentially leading to urban sprawl, increased traffic congestion, and overburdened public services. We must also consider the long-term consequences. Once the urban service area is expanded, it becomes challenging to reverse. What starts with a single amendment can snowball into widespread changes that alter the very fabric of our community. A specific need to expand the urban service area has not been provided other than to support a developer's personal business plan. As such, the county commission owes it to the community to leave this rural as is. The applicant can develop at one per acre, and the community would accept that without objection. I urge you to reject CPA 24-33 and CPA 24-34. Let us prioritize plentiful, sustainable growth that respects our rural heritage and ensures a high quality of life for all residents. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other speakers?
That leaves all the speakers virtually.
Thank you very much. The applicant has time to rebut.
Kami Corbett again for the applicant. I would respectfully disagree with these folks who said that the Planning Commission did not consider their analysis. I know for a fact that the staff talked with at least some of the people before the public hearing. They all had the opportunity to present at the public hearing, and the Planning Commission itself made the decision to go with their staff's recommendation. You heard from Planning Commission staff, you heard from our planner, that the proposed expansion is consistent. You have criteria in your comprehensive plan to determine when it's appropriate to expand the urban service boundary. We demonstrated that we meet those criteria. Your plan also directs you that the minimum density you should look at when you're expanding the urban service boundary is a res four. That should be your threshold. And that's what we, that's what directed us to ask for res four, not a business plan or not something else like that. We do have our transportation engineer here, as well as our civil engineer. If the board has any questions about traffic or drainage, but those will be coming back to you during the zoning and will be more appropriately reviewed at that time. the zoning and will be more appropriate, appropriately reviewed at that time. Things like, such as the emergency access and the lot sizes and things, that are all to be addressed at zoning. So unless you have any other questions, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Whistle?
Thanks. We've, engineering and impacts are not handled during the planning amendments. Tonight, we're simply sending this to the state, to my understanding, for agency reviews and the option. Hmm?
These are both small-scale.
Oh, so we don't even have to. Good, good. Even better. I would defend the Planning Commission staff. I've always found them to be extremely willing to engage with any questions they get from the community, and for all reasons of them finding consistency, I will move for approval.
Commissioner Spada?
Yes, this is nearly 100 additional units, and that raises significant concerns regarding the capacity of our existing small roads and the potential impact on local traffic. I believe the development would adversely affect the community's infrastructure and quality of life. So I don't, I don't support the, do not support what we've found so far from the commission, but.
Thank you. I see, thank you very much. I see no one else in the queue. We have a motion for HCCPA 2433 by Commissioner Whistle, a second by Commissioner Myers. Please record your vote.
Yes.
What's the pleasure on 2434?
Motion carries six to one. Commissioner Cameron Spada voted no.
Thank you.
Move approval. A second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Whistle, a second by Commissioner Bowles, for HCCPA 2434. Please record your vote.
Motion carries six to one. Commissioner Cameron Spada voted no.
Thank you. Seeing no other business, we are adjourned.